... at the end of the table. That's what I know I saw them. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry for the brief delay, but we're going to go ahead and get started. And we have our staff at the end of the table ready to get us started. Dr. Cochran, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. And I have Sherri Golden Perry with me who works with IB programs in our office. I have Sherri Golden Perry with me who works with IB programs in our office. So, we're looking forward to sharing with you a proposal to move the middle years international baccalaureate program from East Millbrook to West Millbrook Middle School. And we're glad and excited to have Kelly Aman, principal of West Millbrook, and Eric Fitz, principal of East Millbrook here with us today. So, moving IB officially from East Millbrook to West Millbrook will allow East Millbrook to focus on their new theme, to increase magnet applications, and at the same time, give parents an IB MYP option that is in close proximity to Millbrook High School. West Millbrook is also in alignment with the magnet objectives. You can reference the magnetization chart in your backup materials for West Millbrook if you want to look at that in more detail. So, the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program is implemented in over 1,400 schools in over 108 countries around the world. It is an internationally recognized curriculum where the eight subject areas of English Language Arts, Science, Arts, Design, Math, Physical and Health Education, Social Study, and World Languages are equally integrated into the program to ensure that all students have exposure to a balanced education. For IB, the primary years program is kindergarten through fifth grade, similar to our elementary schools, but the middle years program is sixth through 10th grade, spanning middle and high school in our district. And then the diploma program spans 11th and 12th grade. We have two kindergarten through 12th grade pathways, IB pathways in our district, the Garner and Millbrook. Moving IB MYP from East Millbrook to West Millbrook will keep the Millbrook High School IB pathway complete, that six through 10 pathway. Rotten and Anlo both have authorized diploma programs but are on a different pathway based on their whole school magnet themes of GT, IB, and Global Studies for those two schools. East Millbrook was first designated an International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program Magnet School in 1996. In 2015-16, East Millbrook was part of the 2015-17 MSAP grant that the district did not receive, even though we just received the one that we just got, and to be in the grant that they had to significantly revise their theme, their new themes, the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts. And the school has embraced and is focused on this new theme. West Millbrook's free and reduced lunch percentage is consistently above the district average. Student achievement remains flat and below the district average, and the school is under-enrolled. Becoming an international baccalaureate magnet middle will help West Millbrook retain some of their base students that they are losing to other schools within Way County and to charter and private schools by providing a rigorous international curriculum for their students. Our plan is to share information about IB and receive feedback from the West Millbrook faculty and staff on Wednesday afternoon and evening, and bring that information back to you at the student achievement meeting on Monday. Both East Millbrook and West Millbrook sent emails to their faculty and parents to let them know about the proposal that we're sharing with you today. And then finally, our proposal is to move the International Baccalaureate Program from East Millbrook to West Millbrook, starting in the 18-19 school year. That would mean that West Millbrook would participate in the magnet fair this fall to accept students for the following year. And from a funding standpoint, we wouldn't be requesting additional funding because we'll repurpose funds in our office that are used for IB fees and professional development for East Millbrook, for West Millbrook, and then repurpose other funds in our office for positions for the schools. So, we would not have to request funding. And that's it. We're open for questions. Any questions? Dr. Martin, Ms. Cash, then Ms. Cusker.
So, I think I'm very supportive of the idea. I say "I think" because I want to make sure that we hear from parents and staff before we make a decision. I guess my biggest question is transition plan. We sometimes have a tendency to come out with, "Hey, we're going to do this," and boom, right away, like next month, all of a sudden it's the magnet fair, you've got to advertise. A lot of when we take action, right, marketing takes some time to lay the groundwork to be successful. And my goal is always, when we make a change, I want it to be successful. And so, I guess my question is about what is the transition plan? Are, you know, is it, are teachers going to have to switch school in one year? Are we looking at maybe next year being sort of a ramp down, ramp up kind of combination? I'd just like to know a little bit more about what the transition plan, which I think both families and staff likely would need to know, because nobody usually likes to just jump and change schools in one year.
So, from East Millbrook's perspective, they already have been focusing on their new theme, and that's where a lot of their energy and there's been some turnover there, so there's not as many IB trained teachers.
But there presumably still are several students in the program.
Yes.
Who would want to finish.
And if students wanted to finish that, then we would work with them with student assignment through, because they would apply, like, so if they wanted to go from East Millbrook to West Millbrook to finish, let's say, seventh and eighth grade year in IB, then they could apply during the magnet application process, and we would make sure that East Millbrook students in the IB program got a priority.
So, that's exactly my question, right? Are we saying, "If you want to continue in the program, you must change schools?" Or are we saying, "If you want to stay in the program, there's not going to be quite as many offerings, but you still can get through the IB program in the same school." Do you understand the difference? I'm not completely sure we want to tell all the students, "If you want to stay in the IB program, you must change schools." I'm saying I'm not sure. But I'd just like us to think about the transition plan that doesn't necessarily put the parent into that difficult situation, the child in the difficult situation of, "Which do I choose?"
That's my same question. It's already come up in the population a little bit, was like kids that are going to be going into eighth grade or seventh grade. They don't want to change schools, and they want to stay in the IB program. So, I'm hoping there's going to be some transition to allow them to stay at that school and take some courses, rather than especially an eighth grader having to move over to another school his eighth grade year. I don't know how we've done it in the past. I don't know if the transition is going to happen, but that's already been a question.
So, Kathy, was it, or was it Roxy? My question had to do with the recent magnet grant that we received. Is that, is the professional development, some of the other funding in that grant able to support East Millbrook in its transition, given it was in a previous grant? Or is it going to be focused on those four schools?
Focused on those four schools. Angie's sitting over there too, especially, so she'll make sure.
She's going to make sure that those are the parameters of that federal grant are quite strict. So, just, I guess to make sure that we're having, we're strengthening East Millbrook's Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, as, I mean, they've been ramping that up, but I just want to make sure we keep our focus on strengthening that.
And that would definitely be a priority for our, that would definitely be a priority for our office with local funding that we have, since they didn't get the grant. We would love for them to.
So, we had other schools in that application, so we've got to make sure that we follow through on all of those plans as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, anything you want to add to us, or are you taking the questions back regarding transition?
We can maybe bring you some more information back when we come to student achievement to address the issue of how we would phase, because we would want the students, and I think Mr. Fitz would say this as well, that we would want the students to stay at East Millbrook too. Like, if they're a seventh grader, just because we're making this change, we wouldn't want them to change, because I feel like overall for the student, that's what they would want. So, we'll come up with something more specific for you for Monday. Okay. This one is?
And when does this begin?
Tomorrow evening at 6:00.
Tomorrow evening? Because I think that's really important to get the input from the parents, because let's say they say, "No, I would rather go to another school," okay, than finish, because that could be a choice. And if that is what happens, then that opens up more seats for the new thing. So, I think that input from parents and the opportunity for our teachers that are already
...that is in close proximity to Millbrook High School. West Millbrook's also in alignment with the magnet objectives. You can reference the magnetization chart in your backup materials for West Millbrook if you want to look at that in more detail. So, the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program is implemented in over 1,400 schools in over 108 countries around the world. It is an internationally recognized curriculum where the eight subject areas of English Language Arts, Science, Arts, Design, Math, Physical and Health Education, Social Study, and World Languages are equally integrated into the program to ensure that all students have exposure to a balanced education. For IB, the Primary Years Program is kindergarten through 5th grade, similar to our elementary schools, but the Middle Years Program is 6th through 10th grade, spanning middle and high school in our district, and then the Diploma Program spans 11th and 12th grade. We have two kindergarten through 12th grade pathways, IB pathways in our district, the Garner and Millbrook. Moving IB-MYP from East Millbrook to West Millbrook will keep the Millbrook High School IB pathway complete, that 6th through 10th pathway. Rotten and Enlow both have authorized Diploma Programs but are on a different pathway based on their whole school magnet themes of GT, IB, and Global Studies for those two schools. East Millbrook was first designated an International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program Magnet School in 1996. In 2015-16, East Millbrook was part of the 2015-17 MSAP grant that the district did not receive, even though we just received the one that we just got, and to be in the grant that they had to significantly revise their theme, their new theme's the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, and the school has embraced and is focused on this new theme. West Millbrook's free and reduced lunch percentage is consistently above the district average. Student achievement remains flat and below the district average, and the school is under-enrolled. Becoming an International Baccalaureate Magnet Middle will help West Millbrook retain some of their base students that they are losing to other schools within Wake County and to charter and private schools by providing a rigorous international curriculum for their Our plan is to share information about IB and receive feedback from the West Millbrook faculty and staff on Wednesday afternoon and evening, and bring that information back to you at the Student Achievement Meeting on Monday. Both East Millbrook and West Millbrook sent emails to their faculty and parents to let them know about the proposal that we're sharing with you today. And then finally, our proposal is to move the International Baccalaureate Program from East Millbrook to West Millbrook, starting in the 18-19 school year. That would mean that West Millbrook would participate in the Magnet Fair this fall to accept students for the following year. And from a funding standpoint, we wouldn't be requesting additional funding because we'll repurpose funds in our office that we use for IB fees and professional development for East Millbrook, for West Millbrook, and then repurpose other funds in our office for positions for the schools, so we would not have to request funding. And that's it. We're open for questions. Any questions? Dr. Martin, Ms. Cash, then Ms. Kushner.
So, I think I'm very supportive of the idea. I say "I think" because I want to make sure that we hear from parents and staff before we make a decision. I guess my biggest question is transition plan. We sometimes have a tendency to come out with, "Hey, we're going to do this," and boom, right away, like next month, all of a sudden it's the Magnet Fair, you've got to advertise. A lot of when we take action, right, marketing takes some time to lay the groundwork to be successful, and my goal is always, when we make a change, I want it to be successful. And so, I guess my question is about what is the transition plan? Are, you know, is it, are teachers going to have to switch school in one year? Are we looking at maybe next year being sort of a ramp-down, ramp-up kind of combination? I'd just like to know a little bit more about what the transition plan, which I think both families and staff likely would need to know, because nobody usually likes to just jump and change schools in one year.
So, from East Millbrook's perspective, they already have been focusing on their new theme, and that's where a lot of their energy and there's been some turnover there, so there's not as many IB-trained teachers.
But there presumably still are several students in the program.
Yes, and if any student-
Who would want to finish.
And if students wanted to finish that, then we would work with them with student assignment through, because they would apply, like, so if they wanted to go from East Millbrook to West Millbrook to finish, let's say, 7th and 8th grade year in IB, then they can apply during the Magnet Application Process, and we would make sure that East Millbrook students in the IB program got a priority.
So, that's exactly my question, right? Are we saying, "If you want to continue in the program, you must change schools?" Or are we saying, "If you want to stay in the program, there's not going to be quite as many offerings, but you still can get through the IB program in the same school." Do you understand the difference? I'm not completely sure we want to tell all the students, "If you want to stay in the IB program, you must change schools." I'm saying, "I'm not sure." But I'd just like us to think about the transition plan that doesn't necessarily put the parent into that difficult situation, the child in the difficult situation of, "Which do I choose?"
That's my same question. It's already come up in the population a little bit, was like kids that are going to be going into 8th grade or 7th grade. They don't want to change schools, and they want to stay in the IB program, so I'm hoping there's going to be some transition to allow them to stay at that school and take some courses, rather than especially an 8th grader having to move over to another school his 8th grade year. I don't know how we've done it in the past. I don't know if the transition is going to happen, but that's already been a question.
So, Kathy, was it, or was it Roxy? My question had to do with the recent Magnet Grant that we received. Is that, is the professional development, some of the other funding in that grant able to support East Millbrook in its transition, given it was in a previous grant, or is it going to be focused on those four schools?
Focused on those four schools, and she's sitting over there too, especially, so she'll make sure.
She's going to make sure that those are the parameters of that federal grant are quite strict. So, just, I guess to make sure that we're having, we're strengthening East Millbrook's Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, as, I mean, they've been ramping that up, but I just want to make sure we keep our focus on strengthening that.
And that would definitely be a priority for our, that would definitely be a priority for our office with local funding that we have, since they didn't get the grant. We would love for them to.
So, we had other schools in that application, so we've got to make sure that we follow through on all of those plans as well.
Thank you.
So, anything you want to add to us, or are you taking the questions back regarding transition?
We can maybe bring you some more information back when we come to student achievement to address the issue of how we would phase, because we would want the students, and I think Mr. Fitz would say this as well, that we would want the students to stay at East Millbrook too. Like, if they're a 7th grader, just because we're making this change, we wouldn't want them to change, because I feel like overall for the student, that's what they would want. So, we'll come up with something more specific for you for Monday. Okay. And then Mr. Fletcher.
And when does this begin?
Tomorrow evening at 6:00.
Tomorrow evening, because I think that's really important to get the input from the parents, because let's say they say, "No, I would rather go to another school," okay, than finish, because that could be a choice, and if that is what happens, then that opens up more seats for the new thing. So, I think that input from parents and the opportunity for our teachers that are already trained, who would want to transfer to West Millbrook, could be a real boost for West Millbrook. I'm real pleased that this is a possibility for that particular area, and that it's like all the stars lined up exactly right, because you have a principal at West Millbrook who is highly trained in the IB for years, and so I just, I feel really good about how that program can take off and move quickly, but I think the input is really important.
Which are the elementary schools in Northern Wake that do the Primary Years Program?
Fox and Joiner.
Fox and-
Joiner.
Joiner, and what is the student assignment alignment to keep folks in the program, or do we worry about that as simply a Magnet Application?
So, if you-
Is there any base feeder alignment needed, or is it simply a Magnet Application alignment?
It's a Magnet Application alignment, but base students get a priority within the Magnet Application selection, if that's what you're asking.
Fox is really close to East Millbrook, so-
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Is that the only two pre- elementary IB programs?
Yeah, it used to be. Millbrook Elementary-
Millbrook is not anymore.
Farmington Woods has it, but they go to, most of them go to Garner, correct?
Yeah, Farmington Woods, Smith, Joiner.
I didn't know Millbrook Elementary didn't have it.
And Millbrook is changing its theme as far as this Magnet Grant.
So, that would be my concern, that we make sure that the Magnet Draw areas and whatnot are squared away.
It's an assignment.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the background, the back office has to work properly to support parent choice.
Yeah, I would echo Mr. Fletcher's to make sure that those things are aligned, are important, and then I'm, I mean, you can, I'll ask the question now, and you can bring it to student assignment, but I definitely want to hear your thoughts about how you're going to keep both of these schools whole, given the discrepancies, as you noted, West Millbrook is already above the district's FNR, and East Millbrook is not, and so we can talk about that more in student achievement, but as you're making these kinds of transitions, given that there's currently not an alignment, say, to Foxborough to West Millbrook, I'd want to hear what your thoughts are, how you're going to assign those kids. If there's not assignment, then what's the option for ensuring and recruiting them through the Magnet Program, if that's the only way in to West Millbrook, for those students specifically at Foxborough, because it's the closest, and they also have low F, of course.
Absolutely. I agree.
I just want to say, I thank both of the principals for being here today, and they look like a team approach. This is very, very, very refreshing, so I thank you for all the work that both of you do in your schools, so it makes my job really easy out there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll see you all in the student chamber.
And that's on London?
Yes, just a few days away.
Yeah.
Wondered if we get another elementary program somewhere.
Now, we're recasting Millbrook?
Well, it takes three elementars to feed a mill.
Yeah, it's not that popular. It's not been a popular elementary. I think it is popular.
It is popular. I think they're, yes.
Try to get in for a few, Farmington Woods.
Yeah.
Can't. Well, then.
It's a matter of the West. If there's a finite amount of money, it has to go-
The first year we got Millbrook, they had this, but every student on you, you have a choice. You ready, Mr. David? Ready, Mr. Mears. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Good afternoon, everyone. Want to take some time and review with you. First, just some background. I think you've been through this before as you were getting budget updates through that time of year, so I won't go into too much detail, but just the state made some, what we consider to be pretty significant changes to the principal salary schedule beginning July 1st of this year, and so want to run through what those are. Prior to this year, the state schedule was based on the number of state-funded certified staff, years of experience, advanced degrees, and longevity was earned separately from the actual base compensation. Prior to this year, we had as part of our supplement some things to help address things that we didn't think were addressed by the state schedule, the old state schedule, and our local supplements took into account the total number of teaching positions and teaching assistant positions, regardless of funding source, took into account whether it was elementary, middle, or high, and there was a small year-round supplement for principals of year-round schools, as well as a small supplement for principals of Magnet Schools. That's looking in the rearview mirror. The new state schedule, effective July 1 of this year, is based on ADM. Years of experience are no longer considered. Size of staff is no longer considered. Advanced degrees are no longer considered. It's based, as you'll see on the next slide, it's based on where the principal is performing. Are they not meeting growth? Are they meeting growth? Are they exceeding growth? Longevity will now no longer be received separately. It's baked into the base state schedule, and they did legislate just for this year. There was nothing specified after this year, two bonuses that are separate from the base state schedule, and I'll talk to you a little bit about those in a minute.
David, before we go farther, on what courses are evaluated as part of this growth measurement, and what portion of the student population would be taking those tests?
I believe, and this is where I wish Brad McMillan were here, but I'll-
We got a lot of folks that are very important training program today.
Right. It's my understanding it's on the overall school growth, so based on the entire student population.
It's everything that goes into EVOs, but SAS keeps that private, so nobody knows what all goes into EVOs.
They lost a lawsuit in Texas, by the way.
And they should, right? If you're using numbers for these kinds of things, you need to know what data goes into it. We know that all-
Well, we don't test every subject at all grades.
Right. We know that reading, math, I mean, when you look at the DPI website, you can see what tests are taken, you know, it's the reading, it's the math, and so on and so forth. It is some amalgamation of all the tests that are taken by all, by students at any given school.
At the high school level, it's only certain, there's certain courses that are on.
Biology, Math II, ELA.
So, there's a temptation not to put certain students in those classes. Not that that ever happens, but there's that temptation, especially when you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
So, on the state, they look at ACT.
ACT, which is universal for all juniors.
It's a monstrous spreadsheet.
All right, so let's, my concern is that it's an imperfect measure.
Oh, it absolutely is.
And that we really need to make sure the public understands how imperfect it is, even of what it attempts to assess, which is not the entire culture of the school and the quality of construction, and whether people want to be there or not, et cetera. So, not to hold up the presentation any further, but I think that's a key point for us to deal with as we move forward and try to have some rational conversation with the electeds downtown.
And that it drives to different incentives than we really want to put into place. I'm sorry.
I just had one question. Where are we in the national ranking for principal pay?
Last one.
And, okay. I've heard 50.
It's towards the end. I've seen a couple different numbers, depends, that's one of the reasons the legislature stated that they were looking to improve that.
That's a good point, because that had been the driver of the conversation, to do some, to address administrative pay. But I had a quick question on what, does ADM, based on ADM, is that going to somewhat go alongside size of staff and sort of be a substitute, or how's that going to differ from being, the schedule being on size of staff?
If you wait a minute, we'll get there, and let me say one more thing, we'll get to a little bit further too, but what we're going to recommend to you today is for the 17-18 school year only. It's only for one year, and the reason for that is, we want to have time to work with the Division of Principals, Staff, HR, and also see what the legislature's going to do when they come back, whether that's in January or in May, because we think there's a reasonable chance that they're going to make changes as well, so this is, whatever we're going to decide is going to be for one year only. The state does have a Hold Harmless provision for this year as well, so based on just the state schedule, if a principal were to go backwards this year on the new state schedule compared to last year, they'll be held harmless, they won't go backwards. Why might they go backwards? This is what the new state schedule looks like. You can see, this is the ADM, and then these are the base state salaries, and base what that is, that's either you don't have enough years of history to be judged on your last two or three years' performance, or for two out of three years, you did not meet growth. Met growth, two out of three years, you met growth, I believe. There's a hybrid model on there, and I think you can have one year of exceeded growth with one year of not met, and that still would bring you into this category, and exceeded growth would be two out of three years where you exceeded growth.
And I'm not saying we should shuffle principals around, but what happens if you take a principal who had exceeded growth, and move to a challenged school that hadn't met growth? That principal goes back to base.
Well, your history follows you.
Okay.
So, your history, if I'm at school one, and I exceeded growth, and then I go to school two, and I, let's say, didn't even meet growth, and then in the third year, I'm at whatever school, and I exceeded growth again, I will still get in that fourth year, looking back three years, an exceeded growth.
Okay.
It's not just associated with where you currently are. But there's some things, and to your point, Ms. Kushner, all of a sudden with this schedule, it's based strictly in ADM, it's not based upon number of staff. Here you would have a situation where a high school principal with 3,000 students would earn the state base as a middle school principal with 1,301 students.
Because you don't have that gradation of staff.
Correct.
Wow.
And another example, and there are a lot more, I'm just going to share a couple with you, again, based on the new state schedule, principal with 15 years' experience in any one particular school in any one of these categories is going to make the exact same basic state compensation that a veteran would make.
And this is supposed to improve our ranking in principal and administrator pay?
My understanding, that was their intent, desired intent. So, as we look at this, and we look at, if we applied the new state schedule with no other changes to our local supplement, some of our principals would see very, very significant increases. I think the highest was right around 22,000. Same scenario, new state schedule, no changes to our local supplement, others would see significant increases, close to $30,000.
Decred.
I'm sorry.
And plummet's a great word. So, is this actually increasing the amount that the state puts into principal salaries, or is this taking the money that they have and just shuffling it around in a different manner?
My understanding, they have increased overall, they have increased, and one of the things, if I can go back, again, without getting into a lot of details, what they've done, they have moved the bottom up. They've moved the starting compensation up, but then what they've done at the other end is the opposite.
When we say experience, can you define what the state calls experience?
Years of experience.
All right, that means years as an educator, not necessarily as a principal?
Correct.
Okay.
So, as I said, the state will hold harmless for this coming year, they have not said so going forward. Huge upward swings, if we were to fund them locally in future years, are not sustainable without significant additional local funding, and the downward swings, we do not believe are acceptable. So, our recommendation, and again, reiterate, this is a recommendation just for the 17-18 school year, would be, and we have to, we have to move principals to the new state schedule, that's not our decision. Our recommendation is that we would make adjustments to the local supplement so that all principals would see an increase in their 17-18 wages compared to 16-17 wages. We did review the recommendation, that I'll show you in a second, with the Division of Principals. We did receive positive feedback and support from them. And the recommendation basically ties back to the three categories of base, met growth, or exceeded growth, and we would apply a 3% increase over 16-17 wages to 17-18 wages for those that are in base, a 6% increase for those that met growth, and again, two out of three years, and a 9% increase for those that exceeded growth. So, all principals would see an increase ranging from 3% to 9% based on where they fell in that spectrum. Using growth, we believe to some degree levels the playing field. I know there's been some concern about, from some of the board members about that, as well as looking at this from a performance pay perspective, and we've added some slides at the back that we will present to you in the board committees for discussion purposes. It aligns with the new state structure, and I want to just share that these recommended wage totals and the increases are before any bonuses would be paid. So, if I could sidestep and just share with you what the two bonuses are. They're for principals who supervise the school that was in the top 50% of the state in EVO scores, and the bonuses range from 5,000 down to 1,000, depending on where within the statewide growth they are. Legislation does require that we pay these this month, and just to give you a sense, we just got information late yesterday, for these bonuses, 69 of our principals will receive one of these bonuses.
That number again?
69.
69 out of 100.
47 will, and again, we have not verified this data, so that's why I don't include it in my slide, we just got it late yesterday, but 47 would receive a $1,000 bonus, four would receive a $2,000 bonus, four would receive a $3,000 bonus, four would receive a $4,000 bonus, and 10 principals would receive a $5,000 bonus. So, 10 of our principals were in that grouping right there, within the statewide scores. The second bonus, well, then again, just to reiterate, this bonus is only for the current year, it's not legislated beyond this year. The second bonus is for principals that would receive $10,000 if they had a D or an F school in the prior year, and exceeded growth, 5,000 if they had an A, B, or C school in the prior year and exceeded growth last year. Again, these are in addition to the recommendation for base compensation, and again, based on the initial information, we've got five principals that would receive a $5,000 bonus in this category, the second bonus.
None in the 10?
No. And based on-
Because we didn't have any D or E.
And bonuses would not affect retirement compensation?
That is correct. Neither of these bonuses are eligible for the retirement.
So, retirement is based off of base salary?
Well, salary.
Salary.
Salary. But these bonuses are state-funded, fully state-funded?
One year, correct. For one year.
For one year, and we're trying to keep them.
So, we've got an alternative, if the board would like to consider it as well, and the alternative is pretty much what we've described to you, but instead- And the alternative is pretty much what we've described to you, but instead of having the differentiated 3, 6, or 9% based on base, met, or exceeded growth, it would be a flat 5% across-the-board increase. It takes the differentiation on performance out of the picture altogether. And again, one year only.
What did the principals say about those two? What kind of feedback did you get?
High on the first one, very low on the second one. Second one being 5%.
Did they know?
And high, I mean, high is qualified and relative.
Right.
Given the parameters, it was like, we understand, and it makes sense, and this could work for a year.
Based on the further digging that we may talk about, and maybe others have done, to what extent do the principals know the distribution of the growth? I think there's a perception that the growth takes a lot of things like socioeconomic economics into consideration when the data show that, eh, not so much. So, do the principals know how the growth scores are biased?
I think generally, they do. Most principals get that. They may, we may have shown them a distribution not based on growth, but these are the gainers, these are the losers by brackets, just to give them an impact of how skewed the whole thing was. But I, go ahead.
They generally know, not speaking so much to, let's say, weaknesses within the entire model, but they know what their history is going back three years, last year, or two years.
They know their personal history. Yeah, no, right. Like, what I'm talking about is more the system-wide view of what's going on.
Yeah, we tried to give them sort of a WCPS impact, and by, I think Jackie shared maybe by groupings of 5,000 in this band, an increase of 5, an increase of 10, whatever, a hold harmless decrease of 5, decrease of 10, this and that. And then, and so then, when they looked at 3, 6, 9, it was like, okay, we get that, and that makes sense. But I've already heard some things out of board members that we could be feeding into discussion for year two of this thing, that might improve it. And I'm pretty darn certain we can do better than what we've had to do here in about six weeks. It would require rethinking how we use the local supplement dollars. And I, I think the old way of attaching supplements to size, or magnet, or year round, or whatever, that may be gone, because in the absence of more local, you're probably taking that bucket, and then you're reusing it. Basically, the way I think about it, it's like, we pay principals at this level, which gets them there based on local dollars. And whatever's happening underneath with the state, it just happens underneath. But here's where you get paid in wage. Now, that's my civicistic thinking, but that's the kind of thing we would try and get to for 18, 19, working with the Division of Principals and our staff and everybody else, in the absence of a change from the legislature.
And who knows, if a change in the meantime?
They could. They're hearing from a lot of principals directly, and organizations, and everybody else.
So, the changes, regardless of what they are, will be retroactive back to July 1st. As I said, the bonuses will be paid this month regardless of what is decided on the principal's salary schedule. As we've said, we will engage stakeholders in the coming months to put together a comprehensive plan. But even that plan, as we develop it between now and either January or the spring, has the potential to change with whatever the legislature wants. Let me go ahead and skip over here. I've got a couple of slides that Dr. Martin had shared, and he had expressed concerns, as he has this afternoon in the room, on using growth as an indicator of performance, and I guess not to put words in your mouth, but questioning about, does it really level the point? Dr. Martin, could I turn it to you?
Sure. So, last night, because I've been looking at performance and growth and a number of those things to help inform our calendar discussions, I had a lot of the data. So, when I saw the meet, does not meet, and exceeds rankings, I went to the numbers to try to see, you know, how the state is making their cutoffs. And so, their exceed, meet, or whatnot are, is a plus or minus 2%, or plus or minus 2 on the scale of this EVO's growth. And so, that's why you see those red and blue lines. So, the, yeah, the blue line is the cutoff between the exceeds and meets, and the red line is the cutoff between the meets and does not meet. And then, again, because I've been looking at this stuff for a long time, I knew that the EVO's growth numbers did not show as dramatic a trend with respect to the socioeconomic as does the performance score. And if I, if I just look at this, it kind of looks like a scatter plot, looked like it took care of most of it. But when I, when I overlay the cutoff points, what you discover is, so down here on the x-axis, is the percent of free introductions, lunch-eligible students in the school, the y-axis is the EVO's growth. What you see is out here, right, our district average for poverty is right about here. You see virtually nobody is in the exceed category.
Right.
It doesn't matter that these schools have principals that are working, principals and staff, who are working to the bone to try to help these children succeed and to overcome pretty significant barriers. And the other thing that I saw is, if you look at the under 10%, you have very few in the does not meet. And while I respect the work of all of our principals, I know that this does not reflect the work and the challenges. And I happen to be someone who wants to pay people based on the challenges that they're meeting, not just where they happen to walk into. And so, I said, you know, how do we, I hate performance pay, but if you're going to do it, is there a way to make progress and make this less bad? And so, the green line that you see here is the linear trend for all of this scatter. It's not a superlinear trend, but for human data, that, there is a real correlation. You can then take the slope of that line, and you can now normalize for the poverty effect, basically now, this becomes the level line. So, the next slide has done that. So, the zero is now the level line. If I use the state's plus or minus 2 from zero, now you've got what I would contend is a more reasonable distribution that if I were to believe EVO scores, which I don't, but if I were to believe EVO scores, they are giving you a better representation across our schools, and you're not giving the benefit of the doubt, or you're not, at least not giving as much benefit of the doubt simply because of the school that you walk into. So, I think one could apply basically the same rubric that we've done with this set of data, instead of the strict EVO's growth, and would be, we would be a less imbalanced or a less not fair distribution. So, that's my, and this is just one year, this is not looking at the two out of three years. One could go back and do the same kind of analysis for every year. I would rather us move along this line.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because it, and we all recognize the added work that you have to do in a challenged school. And I think we need to reward work, not just reward who comes to your school in the first place.
Just a couple of legal parameters as we, as we look at these, just one, that under applicable law, you're not allowed to reduce the salary of a principal without going through essentially demotion procedures. And so, that's, you know, in this one, when I'm putting into this test, I mean, obviously, nobody's going backwards in pay. So, that can be a challenge in the future, depending on what the district ultimately does and what the state does. The law does allow, however, even though in general you can't go back, that you don't, you're not, bonuses aren't carried forward. So, if it's considered a bonus, you don't get that moving forward. So, there's a bonus, you don't get that. What is a bonus, what is not, can become, I think, an interesting question, particularly when you start to look at this performance pay. And so, that's going to become, I think, a challenging legal question as you sort of proceed with this. So, those are some of the things moving. I sent you all just the link to the statute that determines how you develop school growth that you use for purposes of principal pay, the statute on it, but I didn't want to waste your all's time with it now. But those are some things, I know that the General Assembly is looking at and trying to figure out, how are we going to address this? Because with the big swings, you know, you can certainly look at somebody as a, at the possibility of a principal going up here and then dropping down to here the next year. Is that a demotion? You know, so, those are the issues. Again, the state, the board can revise your local supplement schedule, sort of as you're doing here. If you're doing that with board approval, you can do that. Those are some of the legal parameters.
And for our, for our principals who do get state retirement, how does this affect their retirement? Because their retirement is based off of the last three years of salary?
What they, let's say we've got a principal, or that is, let's say, in the last four years, whatever they receive in this year, which would be whatever increase they receive, would all be eligible towards retirement, state and local supplement. And if I could add, subsequent to Dr. Martin sharing his concern, we went ahead and said, okay, well, let's take a look at, for the two out of three years, on the data that we pulled for our principals, what does that look like compared to, are they in the 3% increase, 6% increase, or 9% increase category for the best two out of three, vis a vis the F and R of the school?
Right.
Now, the one thing, I'm going to show you one last slide, with the time we had, we were only able to compare it. It's using the past three years of the principal's history, regardless of where they were, but it's comparing it to the F and R rate of only the current school they're assigned to. So, there may be a little bit of noise in there.
Right, no, I agree.
So, and this is what we saw. It's a little bit hard to see. That's the distribution of principals out of 180 or so that would see, under the recommendation, the 3% increase. And I didn't bring it with me, but I think the number's around 70 principals. And this is F and R here, 0 up to 80. That's the distribution of principals that would see the 6% increase. And the N on that was around 85. And then, lastly, this is the distribution on the F and R line for those that would receive a 9% increase. And the number on that was, I think it was 24, 25, for the principals.
And those are mostly toward the lower?
It's telling, you're telling the same picture, which, again, comes as no surprise because of the impact of F and R.
Well, and like I said, I mean, it just builds in the wrong incentives, it seems to me, for how we, how we incentivize principals to choose their schools and where they're going to go.
Well, and it makes it harder for us to have a conversation.
Right.
If I got an offer for you.
Right.
Oh, really?
And I really need you to go here.
Right, right. And then, also, the number of principals we have inside the three-year sort of, I can get to retirement inside 27 years, reaching retirement, that's a pretty high number. And so, depending on what happens with the state calculation, depending on what we do, some of those folks can look at that, add their sick leave, and say, there's no point in staying.
I think I asked you the number, do we have, I mean, just from an HR perspective, how soon do people decide, tell you all when they're going to retire? Look at Kathy, because she just did this.
How soon do principals tell?
Yes, tell, not decide.
Well, there's a timeframe.
You don't give much notice. I mean, you give adequate notice, but you don't want your community, you're still leading a community up until retirement. So, you plan it out very carefully with your area superintendent.
Well, that's what I thought, meaning we wouldn't know.
Yeah.
But I was checking with a professional.
And how many principals do we have that could do that?
Enough to worry about.
Yeah, that's enough to worry about.
Just a couple of observations.
We're depending completely upon growth, or the lack thereof, to determine principal compensation. But growth is a minor factor in determining whether a school gets an A, or B, or a C.
Oh.
Hello? Sorry, I don't understand that.
Mr. Pletcher, did you write that down?
Okay. And our charters don't have this same issue. The state is not dictating how principals are paid in charter schools, in spite of the fact that half the charter schools are Ds and Fs, while there are some As and Bs. But the state's not involved in dictating how charter schools compensate their principals. And I have to wonder if part of the effort, this would be a snide thing to say, but I won't say it anyhow. That part of the effort isn't to get some of our good principals to retire so they can go work in a charter school.
And we have a number who have.
And we have a number who could, who could retire, get full retirement benefits, and go work in the private sector.
They should. We even have principals.
And lower state dollars.
And that's all right.
Right, and lower state, the lower the state outlay. It just, it's kind of rotten all the way around.
Now that you bring that up, does that, does that apply to our restart schools? There are 12 schools that, does this salary schedule apply to them?
It shouldn't.
I didn't answer the question.
Well, sometimes I don't want to ask.
Can we get there?
I mean, my interpretation is the same flexibility as charter. And so, for the reason that they're not subject to the K3 class size, they should not be subject to this either.
Well stated, Mr. Pletcher.
And what does it mean for AP salaries, any of this? You've given us some new parameters on that, that's a separate thing.
The AP's much less drastic change as far as change in the structure.
I can only take one fire at a time, so I'll just.
I know, I was like, I'm not ready for that one.
I started several over here, so.
So, let me just finish off the presentation with, again, whatever is decided, we're recommending be for one year only. And as I said, it's legislated that we may pay the bonuses the month of October, we do not need board action on that. The state legislated that, we've got the information from the state, we'll verify it, we don't see any problem paying those in October. If the board is in a position to make a decision today, and you don't have to, we'll be, we would be able to get the changes for our principals on the October payroll. And if not, if you want more time to think about it, and come back and talk about it further, you can. Regardless, the changes are retroactive back to July 1st, so whenever they're implemented, the principals will all be made whole. And at least, the last thing I'll share, what, you know, from what I've heard today, what I've presented and heard today, there's the differentiated increase of 3, 6, or 9%. There's the flat across-the-board 5%. And there's then whatever alternative you as a board might want to discuss and direct staff to come back to you with.
Well, I guess, if I had to vote today, I would have to vote for the across-the-board 5% because I think the other one is too unfair. But I think I would rather, I'm sympathetic to the graded scale, but I guess I would like to see us, I mean, we've got a certain number of dollars that we can work with, and I understand, and my guess is the 5% and the 3, 6, 9 are basically revenue neutral. And so, I guess I would recommend that we ought to go toward that same revenue-neutral strategy with the different weighting scheme. Yeah, the F and R, FRL normalized weighting scheme. So, that's where I would tend to land.
And if I could add, Dr. Martin, again, and that you could direct us to do for this one year, that could be as an alternative part of what we look at for whatever our hope is a longer-term schedule.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can only do, I concur with the single-year strategy because we don't know what's happening. And I think for us to try to guess what, I mean, we do not have a crystal ball that can read this legislature. can read this legislature. So, yeah, so I think I would recommend that we implement whatever we do for one year, but let's keep this idea in mind for going forward, because I don't know how we can hire the principals where we need them, based on the strategies. So anything we can do to help that, I think is.
How do you recruit? What do you share when you're going to?
I literally was like, so we're talking about teacher's charge? We're now gonna be at an administrator conversation about pipeline.
And my bet is the principals, if they saw this graph, would say, yeah, we need to do the normalized gradation and not just the strict 3, 6, 9.
Just for, and I know you don't have this now, but if you could let us know where we're at in national average for principal pay and what this brings us to, like, does this kick us up to 33 or, you know, 25? Or are we just going to 49 and a half?
Well, and again, whether it's, I can give you a general sense, whether it's the 3, 6, 9 option or the 5% across-the-board option, that's all it is, and that's probably not gonna move more than an option two.
I'm sure everybody gave my.
Again, we will get the actual data, but I wouldn't think that's gonna have significant impact.
I mean, unless everybody else in the country's gonna be flat, which I doubt, I can't imagine there's movement, Ms. Anderson.
It concerns me that this is such a short turnaround. By the same token, we have to respond to what we have right now. I'm tending, after, this chart is really making me, maybe, just because of one year, agreeing with you, Dr. Martin, that the 5% is a commitment, at least from this board, that our principals deserve more, period. And the fact that you, in six weeks, you can only reach out your net so far, and reaching to the principals group, how far that went beyond that? A good example is what we have done with the class size, where we didn't just look at a small advisory group. There was multiple opportunities for all principals to weigh in on more than one meeting to, and then to go back and talk with each other about, okay, now, what about this, what about this, sharing ideas. And I just feel a little uncomfortable with the first proposal being, I just, I simply don't know how far the net really went to all of our principals. I don't know. Maybe it did.
So now, why would we not do the 3, 6, 9 based on the normalized? Did you say we couldn't do that?
Well, the 3, 6, 9, it would not be able to be 3, 6, 9 based on the normalized, because in the normalization, you have a lot more in the exceeds, you have a lot more in the meet, and you have fewer in the does not.
So the dollars.
So the dollars would have to shift. How it would shift, I mean, the 9 might go down to 7, you know, the 3 might stay at We'd have to see where the dollars would come to. I'm also sympathetic, as you say, Kathy, we're not talking huge dollars here. And if you look at Daniel Pink's book, Drive.
Right.
When he talks about, you know, salary being able to have any kind of a motivational effect, that can only happen once your base is at an appropriate level. Then this stuff can be tweaking around the edges. Our issue here is our basis so far down that any performance-based pay is meaningless. So that's where I would not be uncomfortable with the across-the-board 5%, because that's just trying to deal with the overall base crisis.
Just a quick question. So, a quick point of reference, we have a ton of speakers tonight, so I don't want us to run late, and we still have a very big topic left. So I'd like to take a temperature, unless it's just an absolute burning question, which is fine, we can take that, but I do want to take a temperature where we are, because now we're, we'll be less than 30 minutes on calendar.
Well, with the conversation about the normalizing, accommodating the difference in student populations, I think that's a positive thing to do. And we seem to get head nods from both the super and the chief of financial officer, that that could improve the outcome. I'm happy to wait for that.
And to cast the net a little wider.
Or did I misread a head nod?
Well, I won't speak to that. I just, when you say improve the outcome, it's a thick sum.
Right.
And as Dr. Martin said, you'll likely see, you know, the 9% come down, the 3% could go up, but then you're working really closer to an across-the-board.
We've got finance next Thursday, if you want to take a deeper dive at finance committee.
And I guess, the one thing, not to make a decision now, I would, I would ask the board to think about, does looking at differentiation and or normalization of that differentiation, is that something we do now for one year, or is that something we'll look at more for the long term?
Yes.
I agree with Jeff.
Let us move on, yes, yes.
Clear direction again.
Very clear direction. So to that point, Mr. Neder, if, let me take a temperature that people want to delay it until finance, so that then there is a deeper dive, and then there really is a discussion versus a yes. Is that what I hear people saying? I want to get some clarity from the board members.
Me too. It comes off, no action tonight, we got more work.
That's right, that's what I was looking at.
Right, yeah.
All right, sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Neder, and we'll see you next week at finance.
Good job.
Thank you very much. And thank you for adding Dr. Martin's slides.
Yes.
To be able to, and actually to add this last one too.
I couldn't explain it.
Yes. For a data person, I appreciate the data.
I had a one-on-one lesson one time on normalizing, that's a good, had to go to the office.
This is a combination of creativity and critical thinking. Critical thinking has to get you there, creativity has to show.
Yes, he's doing double duty.
I kept looking, I was like, wait, I thought he was down there. Welcome as the lone wolf.
Well, I had Jonathan, you're gonna have handcuffs, just in case Dr. Merrill tries to leave his handcuffs.
You want me to move around?
No, no, you're good right where you are, we're good.
He can give you the work eye contact from there.
That's funny, that's funny.
Welcome, Glenn, to your first official.
Bye-bye session.
And senior director.
Definitely, I'm already feeling the pressure.
All right, so we're bringing this conversation back, it's kind of like, do you need to buy the minivan or the SUV? You know, what do you want to do with this? So, again, we've had this conversation in September, it dates back to last year. You guys know all the history to this, I know we're a little bit short on time, so I'm just gonna get to the meat and potatoes of this. While we're here, we had input from board members that wanted to have this discussion. We've gotten, all of these schools are considered under-enrolled, except for one, which is Vans. And so we're looking to change those to the traditional calendar possibly, in hopes that they will get their capacity back. We have had some conversations about, you know, is there a loss of instruction for students who show up late? We do have some reporting from schools that students, they're coming after the six-week mark when traditional starts, and therefore, they've missed six weeks of instruction when they should have been there at the start of school. And then not all elementary schools feed to the same middle school calendar, and so we're looking for some alignment. Just as a heads up, some of these schools, four of them to be exact, are considered restart schools, and I know you had talked about that earlier, but they will eventually have the opportunity to change their calendar, and they can bring that to you for approval at a later date. But some of them are included in this discussion as well. Am I going too fast?
No.
No? I know you guys want to get to the discussion. We had some parent feedback back in April, it's reported up there. We had some recently, the 60 is about from a couple days ago when I put this together. But, you know, looking at it, we emailed families this time, about 5,000 families, and got about 60 responses on the online tool. So during the last conversation we had, there was an alternative proposal that was thrown out there. And this is to convert just the middle schools to traditional calendar and leave the remaining schools as either, elementary schools as either track four or modified in Carver's case. The next couple slides here, we'll talk about the implications of that, just to make you aware before you decide on that decision. And then at the end, we'll have three options for you. You can either vote the original proposal, you can vote the alternative proposal, or you can vote to leave as is. Okay?
Okay.
So looking at the implications, right now, we have 4150, policy 4150, offers K-8 alignment for families. Okay? And so that is, an elementary and middle school children in the same household will have that alignment, will work to get them on the same calendar. Right now, the elementary and middle school are versus the high school when it comes to calendar alignment, because we don't always have calendar alignment with high school students. This alternative proposal will align the middle school and high school students better than against the elementary students, which goes against policy 4150, so that's something that needs to be considered in your decision. The base middle school will not always align with the elementary school calendar. In our original proposal, we've got the schools going from, you know, track four to traditional, which would then make all of the elementaries traditional, the middle schools traditional, and have a clean alignment there. This proposal here will have several schools still on the track four calendar with a traditional middle school. And then again, when you leave the elementaries as track four, if those families want to have K-8 alignment, their middle schooler will apply to a track, a multi-track middle school. Multi-track middle schools have four different tracks. The elementaries will have track four only. So therefore, not every family will be able to get on track four for their middle school child. And now we've got track alignment issues with trying to keep them aligned with policy 4150. These are just some things to consider. Do you want to talk about some of that stuff now, or what do you want to do? Because my next slide goes into, just, this is, you know, where they would apply to.
So this is, and it may have been said before, but didn't really sink in, if we're looking at four of those schools becoming restarts, is the idea that moving them to traditional or multi-track year-round, that would mitigate them being on the restart list? Or, you know, if we're going to be, I mean, I don't want to mess with their calendar once and then do it again.
We could reach out to those four specific schools and get a pulse of what they're trying to do. I mean, I don't want to speak for schools and what their ideas are, but I would, I would hope that there have been some sort of conversations, that them being aware of some of this.
Right. Yeah, I agree. I mean, initially, I think it made sense for us to split the middle school, then looking at this, I'm like, whoa, they both have options to change their calendars anyway, as a part of their flexibility.
Right.
So it should, and actually, just thank you for me as well.
I just think it'd be unwise for us to change and then change.
Right, yeah.
If we change, then we are taking away their options.
I just looked at this, I was like, well, then they wouldn't, as principals, if we make the decision here.
Correct.
Yeah.
It just all made sense at the same time. Slide four, East Wake Middle, Lake Myra, North Garner Middle, Temperance Drive Elementary.
So both of the elementaries that are targeted for four-track?
Could change their.
Yeah.
The major adjustments.
And both of the middles who are targeted for.
Changes the game. Yes, Mr. Pletcher.
I'm, the more we look at this and some conversations that have happened between board members relative to student performance in our single-track schools, and whether converting them to multi-track is positive or negative, a look at the entire capacity options, particularly in the Garner area, with the opening of Bryan Road, I'm, I'm ready to walk away from this proposal and not do it.
Second.
Well, you know, I've already stated that I don't think we're, as far as I thought we, and I think it's our direction, like I said in my email, that it's our direction to you, so I'm not sure we've given clear direction to make any changes yet.
Anyone else?
I would like us to, related to that, you know, kind of like we've talked about with the principal pay and every issue that we've talked about today, we've got to, we've got to be much more cognizant of transitions.
Yeah.
Because, you know, something like a calendar change, right, that has staff implications, that has family implications, that has local business implications. And these aren't things that you can just flip a switch and change. And so, I really appreciated the discussion we had last year that was talking about it two years out.
Yeah.
I think that's the wise way to do it, right? I mean, this is, we want to become more like an effective business that actually looks at your demands, it doesn't react to crisis. We have to react to crisis when we have to react to crisis, but let's not create a crisis. So I just, I'd love us to look at adopting much more of a long-term strategy for these kind of decisions.
Especially for me, I mean, I appreciate the discussion, and of course, pretty steady that for me, the proficiency was directly affected all of my thinking. And I really had not even thought about, for me and Garner, the school I was most worried about is a restart school anyway. I mean, so just that alone, to me, there's a ton of movement. For the first time in my four years, it'll be the first time I actually have real student, student assignment issues, because we have a new school. And for me, just the impact, again, the numbers are small, but for me, the impact is great. And I think I said at the start of this conversation last year, that what's efficient for a school, for a school system may not be what's most effective for families. And so for me, this is, I feel like we're coming to a conclusion that just forbearing families with transition and change, and remembering, families are actually little people, and they are impacted by all the changes. So I feel like we're making the right decision, and to both Ms. Cash and Dr. Martin's point, it's gotta be a long-term discussion, but it also has to be multifaceted, right? Like, so for me, this is a discussion of, I was very singularly focused on what I could see on paper around proficiency, and didn't even think about the fact that those low proficiencies had already landed these schools in the pool of restart. And so for me, that's just my own personal example of not having looked at all the factors. Even though my answer, my feeling and sentiments are the same, I just have not considered all the factors that would be impacting the school potentially.
I just want to be sure now, if we message tonight, what we're messaging to the parents, because again, we're not, we're just saying this is a one-year, our vote, but I know they, they might change their calendars, but we're just taking a vote tonight for one year, right?
So.
And we can look at this, I mean, we need to not keep stringing them out for one year, that's my point, I guess.
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out how to message it.
Well, I can't speak for what the board would want to do next year, but today, for me, the message is, if we say that we're not putting this on the agenda, it's gone.
Okay.
For the 18, 19 school year.
Right.
Well, that's my point, yeah.
But I don't know what that means for next year.
We're not directing that either comes back or not comes back next year.
Absolutely, right, okay. It's very different. Last time we directed that a comeback, this time we would not be directing that. I think what I hear both of you saying is we'd be actually looking at a real long-term strategy and giving staff better direction, because we're looking at all the factors from the board.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, that's exactly, I think one of our.
If I could just add the little nuance of that, is, I think we do want to direct that, we have under-enrolled schools, we need to address that. I think we do need to very seriously look at the choice issue, right? Because the calendar choice ends up giving some strange patterns. So I think we, we need to look at it, and in the process of that looking at it, we've got to do the hard work looking at the multiple factors. We could end up with this very recommendation. So I don't think we're gonna, we're here saying yes or no on recommendation.
We actually don't know, because these schools might change their calendar to a modified vector, so we wouldn't actually be doing this.
And we have to work with the community. So it's a multifaceted bunch of work, and I think our direction is, we got to start doing a little bit more of the work.
Mr. Pletcher, Ms. Neder.
And part of what Jim just said, the, I would ask the staff to take a look at the, how the application process for the multi-track schools could influence the movement from track four to traditional schools as well. I'm not exactly sure what staff's thinking is on that. And also, would ask staff to look at the alignment of the middle school to the single-track programs, so that that alignment is clear, and there's less confusion in the community about what their options may be. So if we're gonna be in the four, in the track four school, what is the middle school alignment? Are there enough track four kids that fill that middle school that's on track four? And I mean, I just think there's, there's some, again, in the background, some groundwork to be done to look at those feeder patterns. I mean, we've got here, in slide eight, Vans is a single-track four with Fuqua Varina Middle as a traditional option. Is it? Should it be? When it's severely overcrowded in itself? When it's severely overcrowded in itself? So, and the track four school is under-enrolled. So just looking at that as we continue to look at how we do the alignment and support the student movement through our feeder patterns.
I would caution us in terms, so I agree with Mr. Fletcher, which makes me say, I would caution us about nuancing.
Which is really interesting.
Quite a bit, Mr. Fletcher. But we just got here to agree on this proposal.
Right, right, right.
This is his permanent seat now.
Yeah.
I love it, he was covering my right.
Sitting on the right hand.
That's right.
You got a gal, too.
But what I would, but I guess for me, I would be cautious about a forward-facing message with nuance, because we don't know what we'll do, right? And so a nuance just could, for me, is a confusing message to parents. The message for Wake County Public Schools is, your assignment, calendar, and everything could change every year because this school has multiple dynamic factors? That's not a nuance, that's our truth. As long as, and my daughter's in seventh grade, so as long as I've been in this district, that's, that's been the truth. I'm afraid about nuancing calendar conversations, just for me, is what causes all the problems with parents anyway. Right? Because then they come back and say, well, I don't understand what you mean. And as you all know, we have parents who read every minute, every note, watched every YouTube video, and because we throw in nuances to our messaging, I think that, I think that's our job as the board. We keep directing staff, to be clear, but we also have to be clear, when we try to nuance a message as board members, I think it's the same issue. So that's just my two cents about nuancing to parents.
Staff would have no problem if you actually voted it down as an action item tonight.
Okay.
If that sends an even firmer message, we're absolutely fine with that. And I think what you've said is, in Wake County, there almost all are no guarantees beyond 12 months. But we would be fine with that if you think that helps parents hear the door closed on this.
Thank you, that's a really good recommendation.
Just a question to Mr. Fletcher, to Mr. Bloomberg on that, what would be the recommended motion?
I just recommend that we do not support staff's recommendation on this item, second.
So have a negative, a negative motion as opposed to having.
And I know points on that, but I think.
So we will vote yes on a negative motion, most likely, as opposed to voting no on a positive motion.
That's what it sounds like.
Just wanted to clarify.
A clarification when you make a motion.
Just so we don't have to vote no on a negative.
A clarification.
I'm fine.
What about nuances?
My question involves feeder patterns, as Mr. Fletcher already brought out, but also, you know, I mean, our public school system is one of the biggest attractors to this county, but we sometimes end up, our growth ends up being our own worst enemy. So when it comes to having to do reassignments and not being able to tell parents with 100% certainty that this is where your kid's going to go to high school.
That's our message is, there are multiple factors, and growth is one of the largest. Other than this, you have a lot of legislative mandates, but generally, that is what moves what county to the transitions each year as well.
And our communications department did a great job explaining that in their two videos that they put out. Those are great videos.
So the principal pay one comes off of the agenda, and this one stays on and gets voted down. Got it?
Keep me straight at the table, my memory may fail.
You look at it like that. I don't think it can be said enough, so I want to clarify and make sure I'm hearing the message. The message is that for the 18, 19 school year, all of these schools will remain on the current calendar unless they are a restart school and they come to the board with a request for something different. Is that what I'm hearing?
That would be true.
That would be true.
Independent of our vote today, they still would, would have the potential to explore some other calendar.
I'm saying the restart school, but the others are going to be there.
That would come from the school, as close to from us.
But, but, but what I'm hearing from fellow board members is that you feel there are many more nuances that we have not taken apart, we have not peeled the onion back as far as we need, and that we would not, we need another year to continue this discussion, and could in fact get back to saying, all right, we have peeled it all the way back and we still are going to change these schools to traditional. That's would be part of the study. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes. And I think that, that's what I'm, I think we need to make that clear.
Okay, so adding to that, it means, also, I think we, it's not just panacea, there are 152 students, okay, who missed out on school this year because they were in a track four school and not in a traditional school. They didn't know school starter or whatever reason. It's a lot of lost learning, which impacts the proficiency of those schools. It concerns me a lot about the education of the child. We keep talking about putting the children first, that's what we really want to do. So I think it's not just calendar, it's also a discussion that we have to have about, what do we do for these children that are not getting what they need?
Yes.
Yes, and that's, and that's also an onion, because I live in this district, and it's not that they don't know the calendar start, these are our most transient students. So this is also not that, it's not one sentence that they're not attending school.
But it is not, it's just, it's important, the calendar is not what is determining whether their children are achieving or not, it's the instruction in that classroom and the resources that those schools need. And I'm just really adamant that that has to be part of the, part of the discussion because it's taking resources. We are hiring about 10 additional teachers. That's significant money. Because when you start out, you have to project, okay, not the district-wise, but for, you're putting teachers based on who you think is going to come to the school.
Right.
And then on the 10th day, you go, oh my gosh, I don't have enough kids. And that happened in all of these schools. There was not enough children, so they had to displace a teacher to another school. Okay? But that's not healthy for the school. It's not in the best interest of the children to have a teacher and then be reassigned to another teacher. So there's, there's that layer to it in terms of, our pillar is efficiency. That is one of them, not more than anything else. But I just, I am willing to, I'm not willing to take it off of the table forever.
No, no, no.
Okay? I think there's a.
We need that data.
Right.
That hasn't been given to us. I'm glad you brought it up.
Oh, I got it today.
So you're going to get a lot of it. That's only one data point.
When we voted down.
There is so much data, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of data that is.
Well, these are the, these are the things we're supposed to be doing. We need to be looking at all of this.
Yes.
And so we don't wait a year, we do now. And then we can get clear direction.
I just wanted to just let you know, thanks to Matt Dees and Lisa Luton, all the families tonight will receive notification through email of what your decision is, so they will be contacted.
I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very, very much. But it, just that, this is taking it, we're not going to do it for next year, but we're not saying, because there was some confusion over that from the spring. Yeah, that message is so important. We still have reasons to change them to traditional.
And then we can keep talking about, we have four minutes in there.
I'll have my say in there.
We have reasons to do some of that, we just don't know what to say.
It wasn't that simple, what we didn't do is explain that layer. It was less about.